Now this month, we traditionally celebrate our school board members. And it all begins with having a good board. If we did not have a great school board, we would not be able to do all of the things that we have been able to accomplish. It's due to the members you see seated here. And then hopefully, we will have Ms. Scott to join us later. But our chairperson, Ms. Sonia Moses, our vice chair, and each board member seated here. So first of all, I just want you to join me in congratulating the board members. And I'm just gonna ask you to stand and give them a round of applause. They are doing an awesome job. You are our true heroes, and I hope that you know that. We appreciate all the time, all the long hours that we spend together, planning and preparing for our students and making those decisions which will benefit them. Before we begin, I would like to ask Ms. Boyd to just come up. Well, this starts our celebration. It's only fitting that we recognize... Who just stepped in the door? The mayor is with us. Well, we invited him. Because this evening, we have a certificate for you. And Ms. Boyd, I can't say enough about what you've done as a board member, all the good work, and everything that has happened in Lee County. And some people may not know this, but you have served as a board member for 30 years. Working for children. And also served as president of School Board Association at the state level. So there was representation from Lee County at the state level with Ms. Boyd. So I wanna say, it's such a pleasure working with you and knowing you. And we appreciate all the great things that you've done. And I'm gonna ask the mayor to come up, please. And we have a 30-year pin. And so I just want you to present that to Mrs. Boyd. And there you go.
First, I wanna know how much you put in?
It's worth 30 years of experience.
On behalf of the city of Bishopville and the Lee County School District, giving great pleasure in having the opportunity to present you with this 30-year pin. I know more than anyone else the years of time that you've put in to this, to your service in this school district. And I appreciate it, and I know the kids in Lee County do also.
Okay. We have lots of parents here, students here, principals here, teachers here, to celebrate school board appreciation. And indeed, this evening, it is going to be a sweet celebration. And I want to just share with you... I'm going to ask Jamil Peeples to please come up. Jamil is a senior at Lee Central High School. And I was visiting the school one day, just asked him what his plans were. And he shared his business concept with me. And this was just last month. So tonight, he brought in some treats to share with the board. Now let me tell you about his business. It's called Jamil's Sweet Sensation. And he told me that he was a baker. And I was so jealous, because you know, I can't do that very well. And so I ended up buying things for folks instead of baking them myself, because I don't want them to hand it back to me. But maybe I can learn from Jamil. Now, he also told me, because young people will know exactly what it means to go viral, he also told me about his red velvet cinnamon buns and them going viral. Now, when I say a sweet celebration, I wanna just share with you what Jamil, who has plans, he already has a business. He will be going to school for business. He will be going to a school for the culinary arts. And no doubt, he's going to do great things. And I'm so proud of him. But Jamil brought tonight, and these are for board members and also for our guests, we have vanilla and chocolate and red velvet cupcakes. Then we have cinnamon rolls. Now get this, strawberry cheesecake cinnamon rolls. Red velvet cinnamon rolls. And then just plain. Now, I took a peek back there, and it was hard to come on up here and not just dive into it. But he has baked those for the board and began his celebration. And then I'm just so proud of who our kids are. We got so many great kids at the high school, already plans, and just doing a good job. So thank you. Sweet too. We'll be, you know, checking it out, everything tonight. So thank you so much. Now, we're going to begin our celebration with the schools. In each school, I feel this is a good time. They know who our board members are, and they know how our school district works. And we talk about that in learning and governing and all of the above and the organization of the school district. But each school has a presentation tonight for, in honor of our board members. And so we will begin with Ms. Stoops at Lower Lee Elementary School.
Good evening. And congratulations and Happy Board Appreciation Month. We certainly appreciate all that each of you do, but our board member is Ms. Dorothy Baker. And at this time, Ms. Williamson, our instrumental music teacher, will come with our students as they prepare a musical selection for you.
Oh wow.
The boys, and thank you, Ms. Williamson. On behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Andrews, and the Lower Lee Elementary School family, Ms. Baker, we would like to present these tokens of appreciation to you.
I remember playing those when I was six years old. And how many years was that? Let's see, 60... Six years ago.
She's behind, she can't see her, but yeah, I got her.
Okay, thank you from Lower Lee. Now I have to ask Ms. Billy Williamson if she would please stand up. Now she was a band teacher in Lee County. She retired, and you can feel her love for children and her love for music and her love for imparting that knowledge. And then you can see it happening with the kids. And so thank you for this evening. And I'm going to ask if the students, if you can just tell us your names. Can you come up and tell everybody your name?
Gave away my energy, didn't I?
I need to go over that side. I can't do it.
Say it for everybody. You look so nice, so just... What is it?
Raheem.
Raheem, and what's your last name?
Jahim Skyen.
Now, are they twins? Oh my goodness. And now, if the parents would please stand up so we can give you a hand. We have some amazing, talented students here and educators. Okay, we will move on to Wesley, the principal officer.
Good evening to everyone. Lee County School, we'd like to thank you for your dedication and service. On behalf of Wesley, our group of fifth grade students here, and Mr. Wilson, our newly appointed music teacher, we're gonna do a bit of a celebration. Our Wesley Tiger Plays that we do each morning after morning announcement. And on behalf, again, on behalf of Wesley, we'd like to thank all of you for a special School Board Appreciation Month. And Mr. John, my hands are empty tonight. However, I'll see you Friday morning, I believe you have a reputation. So special for you, Friday.
If you could stay and let me get your name. Get everybody.
I don't know where they standing.
Today's a start.
Okay, and what's right off fifth grade?
Emily Alado.
Tia Turner.
Hannah Reeves.
Naki's Porter.
You all did a great job. You do this, you pledge that you do, everyone, a great job. Now, I'm going to ask the parents of... Tia, your parents. I see them right there. Okay, and then, your parents. We gotta ask you to please stand, stay, remain standing. Today, your parents. Emily's parents. I know I saw them. Okay. And I know I tried my... And so, thank you, amazing young people. And we know we're expecting great things. I'm gonna tell you that every day. Every time I see you, we are expecting great things from you. And I know you will deliver. Thank you. Okay, Bishopville Primary School is honoring you. And they can't wait to come out and say congratulations to our board members. So Bishopville Primary School.
Good evening, everyone. We're excited to the Lee County School District. We board, we wanna just thank you for all your hard work. We couldn't do what we do without you. But I'm gonna turn it over to my students. They have worked so hard. So Taylor, come on out. This is Taylor Lewis. She's gonna explain to you who we are here to celebrate.
Ms. Sylvia A. Scott attended the public schools of Lee County and graduated from the former Mount Pleasant High School as her class rival, Victoria. She also graduated from South Carolina State University in Orangeburg, South Carolina, and Francis Marion University in Florence, South Carolina. Ms. Scott worked in the Lee County School District for 32 years before retiring. She worked as a classroom teacher, a guidance counselor, district test coordinator, district guidance coordinator, safety and drug free schools coordinator, Tennessee hearing officer, and director of personnel, human resources. She attends St. Paul United Methodist Church in Elliott, South Carolina. She is passionate about education, people, and our schools in Lee County. She is always inspiring, encouraging, and motivating others to be their best. She always has a smile on her face and an encouraging word in her tongue. Bishopville Primary honors our school board member, Ms. Sylvia Scott.
My name is Kayla Lewis.
My name is Shanae Gorcha.
My name is Kasani Edwards.
My name is Shanae Brindell.
My name is Nivee Thomas.
My name is Ayesha Thomas.
My name is Akira Pitt.
My name is Arianna.
My name is Kwanie Duna.
My name is Sadeja Slade.
My name is Jai Thomas.
My name is Omar Yelbuzar.
That was an outstanding performance. And what we'd like to do, if your parents or family members are here, if you would just please stand.
Four.
Omar Yelbuzar. And thank you, parents. Thank you for bringing these fans to us tonight. They understand the performance. Thank you. While I was standing over there on the wall, I saw that our board chair, Ms. Sonia Moses, has joined us. And so the screen that you see there is our board chair. And she wasn't here when we started initially, but I would like for you to give her a round of applause. Board chair and organizing and keeping things going with the board and with the school district. So Ms. Moses, we appreciate you deeply today and every day for all that you do for Lee County Schools. We have Lee Central Middle School, Dr. Jones.
I'd like to say, good evening, everyone. And on behalf of Lee Central Middle School, we'd like to give honor to our wonderful board members. And thank you so much for all the great work that you do. As you know, many of you know that we have morning assemblies at our school. And last week, we began to talk about the great work that our school board members do and how they guide our school and provide all the resources that we need in order to provide the education for our children. This week, we're gonna do a spotlight on Ms. Quinny Boyd, who is our school board member. Talk about the various things in her profile, and a little bit at a time. And we'd like for Ms. Boyd to come out and visit with us on next Friday, the 26th. We're gonna have a special celebration just for her and her honor to let her meet some of our children, talk with our school board, and have breakfast with us. Will you accept that, please? Absolutely. Thank you so much. And we have two students who we have come before us today, Fontasia and Genesis. They have prepared special presentations from their hearts for our school board.
So this is a poem written by me, and it's called "Superstar", and it is dedicated to you, Ms. Quinny Boyd. And I will begin to read it. A superstar can only be ready to shine. A superstar can only shine when they are profound to life and cherish every moment of it. With a persp- with a perspacious instinct to helping someone believe that they have something to walk through in life. Oh dear superstar, because that's what you are, no one can stand in your way. Then they tr- then they treat you like an instrument for the sound of the melody that you play. There will be obstacles, but only you cannot win down. And so if that's what you do, I won't be surprised, because a superstar always shines.
My name is Fontasia Price, and I'm an eighth grader at Lee Central Middle School. And today, I will be reading a poem that is dedicated to Ms. Quinny Boyd called "Oh What a Wonderful Woman". Oh what a wonderful woman she is. Goes to work and come home to take care of her kids. She knows life is a challenge, but she knows how to balance it all. Picks it up when you fall and gives it her all. Such a powerful black queen, determined to get it done by any means. Making her mark on the world to empower all the little boys and girls. Oh what a wonderful woman.
You wanna just tell us your names again? We're gonna give you a round of applause and ask that your parents stand as well. Genesis. And we thank you for your beautiful writing and your tribute. Thank you. Okay, and thank you, Dr. Jones, as well. Lee Central High School, Mr. Baron Turner.
We wanted to take this time to tell Lee County School Board and trustees that we said thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all what you've done and all what you're gonna do in the future. At this time, we have a special presentation that's gonna be presented by a man who got honored on yesterday for all his services. I'm talking about Mr. Slater. Mr. Slater and Rodney are gonna come up and they're gonna do a song, 'cause our presentation's gonna be a core presentation. And also have a gift from Ms. Dallin Hay, who's our board member of the... Heywood, excuse me, Heywood, Heywood for being our board member of the month.
It must have been colder in my shadow to never have sunlight on your face. You were content to let me shine, bless your way. You always walked a step behind. I was the one with all the glory. While you were the one with all the strength. A beautiful face without her name for so long. A beautiful smile to hide the pain. Did you ever know that you're my hero? In everything I would like to be. I can fly higher than an eagle. Oh, you are the wind beneath my wings. It might have appeared to go unnoticed. But I've got it all here in my heart. I want you to know I know the truth. Of course I know it. I would be nothing without you. You. Did you ever know that you're my hero? You're everything I would like to be. And I can fly higher than an eagle. You are the wind beneath my wings. Did you ever tell you you're my hero? You're everything I would like to be. And I can fly higher than an eagle. You are the wind beneath my wings. You are the wind beneath my wings.
So, and, um, we would like to just donate with some gifts from Lee Central High School and just wanna say thank you and enjoy the cupcakes that they take from Lee Central High School.
To the parents that's leaving, to the parents and students that's leaving, we just wanna say thank you so very much for being here this evening and that you continue to have your children do well, you do well with them. Thank you for all you do for your children and Lee County School District. That's why I try to work so hard. Thank you for everything you all do. Thank you, parents and students. Okay. One hour fifteen minutes. Okay, Ms. Corde and Ms. Kishon Scott will come up from the career center.
Go see.
You all have proven to be superheroes for education. We appreciate everything that you do for the children of Lee County. At this time, we will present and recognize Ms. Nathaniel Brunson with an art presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The theme for tonight is superheroes for education. Art is a universal language, and artists communicate with viewers through a variety of materials and tools and also techniques. Some use paint, colored pencils, marbles, or even a combination of media. It is also presented to viewers through the various ways, such as examples of drawing, painting, sculptures, ceramics, crafts, and graphic design. An individual came, can choose to portray his or her creativity in various ways. The theme superheroes for education is shown through the work of Jerry Durand, an eleventh grade student at Lee Central High School. His work is portrayed by a hand holding his interpretation of the earth.
Its message is meant to convey that sometimes we venture into our own inner selves, which is a dark place. And there are times when we need to venture out, see and explore what the world has to offer us. Through art, this is possible. The dark color used in the background depicts a place where we, as individuals, sometimes venture into shutting ourselves off from everything that exists. But there's always hope for brighter ideas and positive possibilities. By embracing the challenges of the world, we can come out of that dark spot and decide to explore beyond our wildest imaginations. In this case, Jerry's work demonstrates his ability not to remain secluded, but to take things to control, into control, by holding the road in his hands and pursuing to be creative in his art choices for life. Hence, his choice of bright colors depicting endless possibilities in colorful artist's world. The hand symbolizes its usefulness, which will be the major use for holding the necessary art tools or equipment, which will create numerous artistic works.
For this reason, Ms. Nathaniel Brunson, we're presenting you with this presentation of artwork, because you are a superhero for education and for the entire Lee County School Board.
So if you can just say your name and, um, in the mic, so we can give you another hand and that piece of artwork.
My name is Kishon Scott, an eleventh grade student at Lee Central High School.
My name is Aleah McCullough, a tenth grade student at Lee Central High School.
My name is Jerry Durand, an eleventh grade at Lee Central High School.
Okay, Ms. Moses, um, the district office staff wanting to recognize you and appreciate you as our leader for the, um, board of trustees. And to thank you for all you do for our students. And, um, what, uh, a lot of people know already and things that we, and some things they may not know, but, uh, what we have done in your honor. And, and just so you will know, we talk about books and reading, um, talk all the time about our students and what they need to do. And if I had to say anything about Ms. Moses, I would say that she's extremely dedicated to the children of Lee County School District and to this community. And she always wants to know about the progress, the reading, and we share, talk a lot of times about books we are reading. So if you will look at the center table, and I, Ms. Moses, if you can see the center table. The books that you see don't, on this table, will have the plate, and they will be donated in your name. And one of the interesting facts about Ms. Moses, she started on the board many years ago and, um, was the youngest person ever elected to the school board. And she has remained with that, and we've made a lot of progress in our school district because of her and her leadership. The other thing I'd like to say about Ms. Moses. She is a graduate of Bishopville High School. She is from Lee County. And I just can't say if I had to describe, uh, someone as a fine person. I appreciate who she is, I appreciate the hard work, the long hours, the time that we must put in and that you put in and ensure that we are moving forward as a school district. And I can't say enough about how much I appreciate you. But these books will go into our school library, and I would like to just, uh, share those titles with you. This month, we also celebrate the life of, uh, Dr. King. And we have ordered books that will have the nameplates and will be there. And this is the funny story that I'll have to share about Ms. Moses as well. When we talk about books, I'm old school and you all know it, so I don't read books on the computer. But she, uh, she takes her iPad, and, and our kids can do that. So, um, when we talk privately, I know these books, we could have loaded them on an iPad, but I want them to last and to, um, let the children know how dedicated you are. We have books that have been ordered for the high school. And I hope you can see this, "Testament of Hope." This is Dr. Martin Luther King, and all of the books are about him. Where Do We Go From Here? And this is, um, Dr. King, "Chaos or Community." We also have for the primary school, "I Have A Dream," all of our elementary schools will get this book. And they also will get this one as well. Martin's Big Words. And the last one going to the middle school, this is "Strength to Love." And also writings and speeches by Dr. King. This will go to the middle and the high school. But these books are being donated in your name. So each student who, uh, picks up this book to read, they will know from now and going forward, and it's not on the iPad, but going forward, that they were presented with these books, um, by our chair, on behalf of our chair and in honor of her, for school board appreciation. So we thank you, Ms. Moses, for all you do. You were just in time.